We're going to call this meeting to order. Para traducción en español, por favor escanea el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the flag, salute and invocation. Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, first of all, Lord, I just want to declare and decree divine health over our entire city of Riverbank. Lord, we thank you that you purchased it on yourself so that we could be well. Father, we want to thank you for this opportunity tonight in these chambers, Lord, to be about your business and the business of City of Riverbank. Father, I pray that, Lord, you would bestow upon the council, the staff and the community, Lord, the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of understanding, the spirit of might, Lord, the spirit of counsel, and that, Lord, all of us in this room and this city will just continue to do our part in making Riverbank the best place to live in Stanislas County. In nombre de Cristo, para el que cree todo es posible. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Liba?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Call?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Here.
Mayor Hernandez?
Here. And I do not believe we have any agenda changes, any conflict of interest. Council authority member staff, who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to declare at this time.
I have a conflict of interest with item 9.5E due to property located within the Crossroads Landscape and Lighting District.
Okay. So our first presentation, 7.1, Sturgbea Background.
Mayor, members of the council, Cody Bridgewater, your Director of Public Works, will provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight is just a short explanation of Sturgbea, which is the Stanislas and Twomey River Groundwater Basin Alliance. This is a collective group of other local municipalities that have come together in regards to some state laws that require us to further our sustainability efforts on groundwater use. So the Sigma overview is the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which was signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown in 2014, and it sets the framework for statewide sustainable groundwater management. It recognizes that groundwater management is best accomplished at a local level, and if a basin is found to be out of compliance, the state is eligible to intervene. Some common terms throughout the presentation would be Sigma, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014, GSA, which is a groundwater sustainability agency, GSP, which is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, and Sturgbea, Stanislas and Twomey Rivers Groundwater Basin Association. So some of the requirements of Sigma, in June 30th of 2017, we had to form the Groundwater Sustainability Agencies. By January 31 of 2022, medium and high priority basins had to submit their groundwater sustainability plan to the state, and every five years, we have to update those GSPs. And by 2042, the Modesto Sub Basin is expected to achieve sustainability. So some undesirable results of overuse of groundwater can be chronic lowering of the groundwater levels, reduction of groundwater storage, seawater intrusion, degraded water quality, land subsidence, and depletions of interconnected surface waters. And that's regarding Sigma. So the implementation of the Modesto Sub Basin, this is a history of how our group came to be. These are the Modesto Sub Basin agencies. You have City of Modesto, Riverbank, Oakdale, Waterford, OID, MID, and City, I believe I said Waterford. And so we formed in 2017 in response to the Sigma and have the authority and responsibility to manage a majority of this Modesto Sub Basin and coordinating with the Twomey County GSA to develop a single GSP for the sub basin. And it should be known that the Modesto Sub Basin is a high priority basin, a little level one. So as I said earlier, the member agencies of Sturgbea would be City of Modesto, MID, City of Oakdale, OID, City of Riverbank, City of Waterford, Stanislas County, and some Twomey County. So how does this impact us? Groundwater central to ensuring the health and safety of our community and maintaining the vitality of our economy and environment. And three out of the four cities in the Modesto Sub Basin rely solely on groundwater for their water resources. We are one of those three. Over 60% of the City of Modesto's water supply comes from groundwater, and groundwater is used conjunctively with surface water supplies to grow food, support dairies, and maintain the long-term vitality of our region's agricultural economy. And so where are we now? The GSP requirements, we had to have a plan area, groundwater conditions, a water budget, management areas, sustainability goals, undesirable results, like what we would do in case of measurable objectives, monitoring protocols and data management, and projects to achieve sustainability. So kind of a small graph showing what we have done and where our next steps will be. So we submitted our GSP. It was approved by the state. After some comments that were received from the state, we had to go back to the drawing board and adjust a couple of items, which we're currently in the process of doing. And then so we implement scenarios, monitor the scenarios, and implement adaptive management. And that will be kind of a recurring cycle over the next, you know, into perpetuity essentially. Issues arise, we're expected to handle those issues. So right now, what we're doing is we're developing the plan for some scenarios. Say somebody's local farmer's well runs dry, you know, do we have an ability to provide assistance to, to say, lower the well or drill a new well, things of that nature. So accomplished so far, we have formed the GSAs. Sturgbea received a $1 million grant from the Department of Water Resources to prepare the sustainability plan and an additional $1 million grant to install 18 groundwater monitoring wells throughout the sub basin. And we adopted the GSP. And if you would like to get involved, you can talk to your local groundwater sustainability agency representative, which we have one on staff, Darren Smallen. He's our representative for the City of Riverbank. He is our primary and I am secondary on it. You can sign up for your local GSA's email list, or you can attend public meetings and workshops. You can provide input to the groundwater sustainability plan and help us spread the word. So meetings are held on the second Wednesday of every month from 1:30 to 3:00 at Modesto Irrigation District's office in Modesto. Sometimes that location does change to Oakdale Irrigation's office as well. So just pay attention to the meeting notifications and look at the location of the meeting there. And if you would like more information, you can visit the Sturgbea GSA website at www.sturgbea.org or contact the local GSP rep or GSA rep. And that is the extent of my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any council comments or questions?
Just a quick question. The 18 groundwater wells, can we find that information on the website? What's kind of the status of those?
Those have all been installed. That was actually done, I believe, about four years ago.
Okay, and all that can be found on the website. Cool. Thank you.
We did move through it kind of fast, but so what's the, can you tell me more about the current plan that you said was just approved by the state?
So the GSP, which is our groundwater sustainability plan, was submitted, I want to say, last year and then reviewed by the state, and it was found to be insufficient. So they provided, they sent it back to us and said we needed to expand on our implementation scenarios. So basically assemble a plan for what we're going to do if any of these mitigating circumstances arise. Say where you, you know, run groundwater levels are depleted to a level that they are not sustainable, or, you know, an individual's well runs dry. That is currently where we are at right now. We are in the process of developing a plan, and unfortunately, I don't have any details on that because they have not been vetted out yet.
Thank you. I think you did mention that there are public comments.
Yes, Mayor, we have quite a few on the presentation. Mr. Bill Lyons?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bill Lyons and I'm here tonight actually representing a property that my family owns in Riverbank called River Heights, a little commercial center at 2119 Patterson Road. Primarily a family-owned and operated businesses, range from anything from Valley Donuts to Dale Rio's Restaurant. First, I want to thank Cody and his staff for engaging and representing the City of Riverbank and its residents and its businesses. My primary concern is, and I've been involved with water issues for the last 30 years in the state of California. We're extremely fortunate. The Modesto Sub Basin is primarily sustainable. The only area that is not sustainable is the east side. And I think some of the other speakers may get into it a little bit more. Riverbank and Oakdale are in a sustainable groundwater management area. My concern is, is that there's a real effort that we are all in it together, and we're going to be sharing some extremely high rate increases in the future. We're going to have to do administration, inspection. We're going to have pumping charges, possibly mitigation across the board. And my concern is, is representing my small businesses located in our family's shopping center is, how is that going to impact them? Especially when they are not the cause of the problem, either are your residents or your other businesses in Riverbank. You are going to be paying to take care of somebody else's problem. There'll be a map that'll be shown tonight that was presented at some of the sub basin meetings. They literally show the east side is somewhere between 50,000 to 70,000 acre feet of water a year shortfall. Oakdale and the Riverbank area is sustainable right now. And I would encourage the City Council to encourage their staff to be very vocal at the meetings so that your citizens in Riverbank and your businesses in Riverbank do not have to pay for somebody else's problem that they've caused. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express these concerns. And again, your staff, in my opinion, has been at the meetings and done a good job representing you. Though my concern is, there's somewhere along the line, there's not going to be grants. There's going to be a desire to spread the costs caused by certain, certain individuals on the east side. They're going to be spread against your residents and your businesses along with Modesto and some of the other agencies. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Anthony Rado?
City Council, my name is Anthony Rado. I happen to live in Escalon, but we farm out in Modesto. I have about 500 employees right now, some of which live in the City of Riverbank. I just wanted to touch on some other things with the sub basin. There's going to be a lot of fear mongering brought by some parties, basically insinuating that the state is going to rush in and take over our groundwater and tell us all what to do. I don't believe that to be true unless we take steps to address some of the issues. There's projects in place within this sub basin that are ongoing. I still think that there's more that needs to be done, but it's up to us as a community to figure these things out. You know, the City of Riverbank, to my knowledge, is on groundwater for drinking water. Well, if there's a reduction in pumping across the sub basin, that's going to directly affect you and your constituents and something to keep your eye on. They're going to pit this as a farmer versus farmer issue in our community, and I think that's a travesty. We don't need the negative publicity, as maybe you're aware, but the agriculture industry is pretty challenging, as is. There's, you mentioned the monitoring well, sir. There was a recent report that touched on some of the monitoring wells and kind of how in different areas, they're not looking very good. And so there's, there's real issues that need to be addressed. I would encourage you all to do more research, speak to Darren, who is religiously showing up to these meetings, to pick his brain and just kind of understand a little bit more. This is going to continue to be a bigger, bigger issue with, with actions, firm actions that are needing to be taken by the City Council's MID Board and what have you. And so I, this is kind of maybe potentially your first purview to this, but you're going to see a lot more of it. So I would try to understand it as much as you can. And for that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wrangler Wheeler?
Okay, I'll take it. I'll provide it to council. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm a little bit out of place here since I don't have the privilege of actually living in Riverbank. I do get the opportunity to conduct business here, but I appreciate the opportunity to come through and talk about a issue that we're kind of all tied into. So I'm a farmer in West Modesto, and I feel that we have a kind of a common goal of we face the same financial struggles as farmers, as a lot of your residents do here in Riverbank. A lot of our costs have risen, whether it's cost of goods, fuel, transportation, many things that your citizens here in Riverbank feel the same financial impact of. So when we look at a problem like Sigma is starting to arise, is we see the potential for, in my eyes, an unnecessary cost. We have an issue that is within our GSA, but when you look within the GSA, it's not really an area-wide issue. It's, it's a very focused issue in one area. And the map I'll provide shows that, is that we do have a deficit in our GSA, but it's not necessarily your management area or mine. It's, it's kind of focused on one in particular. So in my opinion, I don't feel that we should have to all share the cost when necessarily we don't all share the same problem. You know, Sigma as a statewide issue was not designed to focus on small communities like Riverbank or other municipalities that are facing this issue. It was really focused to narrow down on areas like our east side agricultural communities that are overpumping and face an overdraft issue. That's not necessarily an issue that I feel that should rely on to the City of Riverbank, but here we all are kind of stuck in the same problem together because of the state. I don't think this is really a one-size-fits-all problem, so I really don't see a one-size-fits-all solution. I don't think that we should all have to share the cost of a potential resolution when we don't all share the problem. So I hope that you can all take a time to look at that map and reach out for any other further information. And I do thank your guys' team for taking the time to face into this issue that we're all kind of stuck in together. So, thank you.
Mr. John Brashudo?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I am a farmer. We've been over in Oakdale for generations, since the 1850s, and we farm all the way around Oakdale. We actually own land above the irrigation district on your way up to Knights Ferry. And the problem with this underground sustainability is we're reaching some levels on the underground water wells where there'll be triggering impacts. And the Sigma's coming up, Board's coming up with events that will have to take place when you hit those triggers, when the water goes too low after a couple consecutive years. We owned land east of Oakdale, which I actually sold and bought land in the district that has nice big fat ditches going through it with plenty of water, where I get 99% of my water from my trees comes out of that. The north, the eastern boys, east of us, they actually pump, so you understand this, 89,000 acre feet of water out of the ground. They contribute nothing back to it. Oakdale Irrigation District pumps, I think they said 4,000 acre feet, but the state for the last 20 or 30 years recognizes the sandy areas and over irrigation. Oakdale Irrigation contributes like 30,000 acre to the underground. So they're actually net charging the underground, and it's documented with the state. Oh, the City of Oakdale pumps 4,500 acre feet out of the ground, which is nothing. Waterford pumps 1,500, the city pumps 1,500 acre feet, which is basically nothing compared to that 90,000 acre feet's coming out. There's been a line drawn pretty much between this whole area, and it's basically all the reports and all the studies are pointing to the boys out of the irrigation district, which is basically above Modesto Irrigation and kind of above Woodward, kind of outside, and they don't pump out of a ditch. Oakdale Irrigation, which I'm involved in, all our land is in Oakdale. They have gone to everybody they could serve and they said, here, we'll give you, we'll sell you water. You're not part of the district, but we'll sell you water at $200 an acre foot. A lot of those entered these contracts and Oakdale said, okay, you have to take at least a third of your water. Third of your water needs for your trees. Well, they pump a third and they won't pump anymore, and our water continues to decline. So they have the opportunity to cure the most of their effects, and yet financially, they won't. The opposite side of this is, I would go buy expensive land in the district for $10,000, $15,000 more, and I'm paying 5% interest. The interest only is costing me $700 a year. So we're doing our effect. We're doing our job, but we're getting no help from them. So it's clearly up there. So, thank you very much.
We have one on Zoom. Ms. Agers, can you please unmute?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Jamie Agers. I appreciate the presentation tonight. Very helpful. I just wanted to point out that when the groundwater sustainability plan was developed, the one that's, was reviewed by the state and set back for needed revisions, of which Riverbank is a part. The proposed Riverwalk project was not part of that plan in its development phase. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agers. Mr. Peter Pearson?
Good evening, Councilmembers. Gary Pearson, resident of Riverbank. I look at Sigma as a very important aspect to all of us, both agriculturally and also for the city. A pointed clarification for all City Council members. An acre foot of water is 43,500 gallons. Okay? There has been some significant analysis for the city about what is currently supplied and used, and I'm looking at a statistic from one of the reports. It says the city currently uses 3,932 acre feet per year and connects to 6800-plus connections. Majority of, is mostly connect, users are industrial track. Couple comments. I, I look at the cost of water, and when one of the previous speakers spoke about $200 an acre foot, as we consider further, I have other communities that are paying close to $1,000 an acre foot. I, as a resident, would be extremely concerned about paying $1,000 an acre foot. I know we have an abundance of water supposedly in our sub basin, but if you look at the adjacent sub basin, the San Joaquin one, it is in a deficit. Even though it looks like our basin recharges, I would caution the council to be very concerned about overdraft and subsidence. And I would also ask the City Council to direct city staff to provide an update about the current status of all the city wells through its past history and looking at the trends within that, because that's really important as we look forward to the next 40 years. I'd also comment to say that other cities have requested additional water rights. And in particular, I don't think we would get a senior water right, but I have another city that in the past 10 years has gotten a junior water right declaration, and I would urge the City Council to consider that. Water is an essential element to us all, and I appreciate your time. Sorry I couldn't be there, but, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And that is all, Mayor.
Thank you. So bringing it back to council, any last comments or questions?
Just a couple more for Cody real quick. Is the status of the wells a part of the actionable, actionable plan for, for Sigma?
For the city's wells or for wells in general?
Wells in general.
Yes, monitoring of wells in general is part of the plan. But you should know also that the city does monthly well checks. We do well soundings at each well site. We monitor both pumping level and static level. And we've been doing that regularly for about, I think this is going on our third year. And what we have noticed, which is pretty typical.
obviously, in the wintertime, we have a lot of, you know, rainy weather. We'll see these wells recharge. And then in the summer months, you'll start to see them drop down a little bit, you know, wet years. Obviously, the recharge is much higher, but if we have drought years, you do start to see groundwater levels go down. But they recover really relatively quickly in our area.
Okay. And then just for reference, if you go to the, to that website there, the 18 wells that were, that were, that have been installed four years ago, is that the monitor, monitoring wells that, that it's listed on the website here or is it a different one? Could you forward me the more updated one? Because there's 11 listed on here and I'd like to see where the other seven are.
And I'll pass it along. Thank you.
So it'd be great to get maybe a follow-up presentation on what the plan is with Daryl, maybe? And kind of what we're listening to here, it seems like raising costs is pretty worrisome. It's going to be a trend overall. So it'd be great for us to be as familiar as possible, maybe to hear these acronyms over and over again. I know it's pretty complicated. So it'd be great to have that.
My understanding is the plan itself is early in the works, so they're expecting it by like fall. So maybe I can come back in the fall once everything's developed and give an update.
And at that point, I mean, what, what kind of advocacy can we do, you know, surrounding that potential of raising costs versus different types of plans or mitigations that could happen?
The best thing that we can do is just attend the meetings on a regular basis. And I'd be happy to forward those meeting invites to any council member that is interested.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. 7.2, Presentation of Calpers Pension Program Review and Cost Management Strategy Assessment.
So Mayor and Council, this item before you is an item we wanted to present to, to you all prior to the conversations we're going to have about the city budget. Obviously, staff costs and benefits is one of the highest costs that the city has throughout all of our funds. So we wanted to be able to share some of what our Calpers Pension Program is doing. And with that, a few years ago, we did do a Calpers evaluation by NHA Advisors, and they came and presented at that point in time specifically related to how the unfunded liability portion of our pension costs were going to increase based on the market. And so we felt it was an appropriate time to do an update, since that was back in, I believe, like 2018, to do an update for a city council and also provide some background information for our newer council members who are not as familiar with this pension program that we belong to. So we have Mike Myers and Eric Scriven from NHA Advisors who are joining us online and will be walking us through this presentation soon. Mike, go ahead and take it away.
Yes, thank you, Maricela, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Am I coming through clearly?
You're coming through just fine, Mike.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for confirming. We could just hop to the slide four, which is the executive summary. That was a great introduction by the city manager of what we're going to be talking about tonight. We're really going to focus in on the city's debt that you have with Calpers for the pension program. This debt is known as the unfunded accrued liability or UAL, and we'll define what that is on the next slide, but that debt is currently $10.3 million. One piece of good news is that that should be coming down to about 9.8 million when the new reports are released this fall. And that's because Calpers did have a good year last year with their investments. They, they beat their goal of 6.8%, and they actually earned 9.5%. But as you'll see, this is, this UAL cost has more than tripled since the last time we were giving the report to the city, and it is projected to keep increasing over the next several years. This is a common theme, a common challenge that is being faced by all cities across the state. So very important to, to budget for. We do know that the city has set aside some reserves to potentially get ahead of this challenge. So we also did some analysis to show you how that can help as well. Next slide, please. So just to quickly define the two costs that the city, that all agencies really make to Calpers each year. The first is the normal cost, and this is the, the annual cost to keep up with retirement benefits for current employees. And in a perfect world, this is the only cost that you would ever pay. However, Calpers often does not meet the, its assumptions, namely its investment returns as well as other actuarial assumptions that go into these calculations. And so over time, there's what's called a UAL or a shortfall that develops between what you would need to have in assets to be fully funded, to fully pay out retirement benefits. That's your accrued liability. And that's shown in the navy blue bar there, about $35 million right now. Right now, though, the, the market value of your assets is at around 24.9 million. So that difference there, that shortfall is shown in the light gray. That's the UAL that you have to repay Calpers. This is a snapshot in time, so the UAL does change every year as we'll get into. It's, it's a large number, so they don't require the city to pay it back all at once. Very similar to a mortgage or any sort of loan, they do amortize this over time at a 6.8% interest rate. And as we'll get into the, the, one of the challenges with the repayment of this debt is that it's not a level payment like a mortgage, so it's kind of irregular each year, which makes budgeting a bit challenging, and we'll get into that in a few slides. Next slide, please. So what, you know, one of the, one of the reasons we are talking about unfunded liabilities, if you rewind about 25 years ago, there was no such thing as an unfunded liability. And that's because the stock market was earning double-digit returns. And there was, there was almost too mu, too much money in the retirement plans. Most plans were overfunded. However, over the last 20 years or so, as you can see in that box in the top right, the investment returns for Calpers have ranged from about 6% to 7%. And so while that's decent, when you think about, you know, the stock market and earning money on your assets, it is a lot lower than they first assumed when a lot of these benefit packages were being entered into. Back in the early 2000s, they assumed they would get eight and a quarter. And then over time, as the stock market underperformed, they started to bring down that assumption. And that assumption is known as the discount rate. It's shown there on the, the first sub-bullet on the right side. And over time, it's come down to 6.8%. And every time Calpers ratchets down that assumption, it means they, they think they're going to earn less on their investments, meaning that the UAL goes higher. The employers have to kick in the difference. And that's one of the reasons costs have been going up for, for all agencies across the state. Some of the other assumptions there are shown that are driving costs higher, namely the last one, which is one change that Calpers made about seven or eight years ago, which forced agencies to amortize this debt over a shorter period of time as opposed to over 30 years, which, you know, similar to a mortgage, would, would provide a much lower annual payment. And then just one thing to note here in orange, that once every four years, Calpers does go through a pretty robust study to look at all their various assumptions. And this is one of the years where they're currently underway. So this fall is going to be a good time to revisit all of these numbers because we will learn a lot more from Calpers about their new assumptions. Next slide, please. This is a graphic from the Calpers website, which we think is really educational. It just shows how benefits get funded for retirees and where the money comes from. About 55%, if you look at the left side of that dollar, comes from investment earnings. About a third comes from the employer, such as the city of Riverbank. And then the remainder, about 11%, comes from employees. And I think the big takeaway that we want to point out on this slide is that if you were to have looked at this graphic before the Great Recession in 2008, you would have seen that the left side of that dollar was about 70%, meaning that investment earnings were making up a large share. And it meant that employers were only needing to kick in about 20%. But as Calpers has lagged their assumptions, all of that has to be paid for by the employer. And so that's why that, that middle part of the dollar keeps increasing in size. Next slide, please. Last slide in this, this overview section, the city does have two Calpers plans. The larger one is the miscellaneous plan. That's the active plan. And while we know that the city contracts for public safety through the county, you do still have UAL on that old safety plan of about 1.3 million. We do want to note that new employees that were hired after 2013 are governed by PEPRA legislation. So this is, these are revised retirement plans with slightly lower or less attractive benefit levels for the employees and a little bit more cost-effective for the city. But very important to note, as we, as we note there at the bottom in bold, that nearly 100% of this $10 million UAL debt is coming from the classic plan. So it's not really impacted by this new PEPRA legislation. Next slide, please. And next slide. So this slide just shows the history of the UAL over the last seven years. So if you look back at 2018, you could see that number's about 7 million. One area we want to point out is how volatile the UAL is. So you can see that big drop in 2021, going from eight to six million. And that's because Calpers had a very good year with their returns. So they earned over 22%. That's a lot higher than the 7% assumption that they had during that year. However, you can see it jump right back to 10 million in the very next year in 2022. And that's because they earned negative 7.5%. So Calpers returns are quite volatile, up and down, and the city has to react to those. The UAL does change the, about one to two years after their final returns come in. And then Calpers does phase in those new cost increases. So you, you do get a little bit of time to react to the impact of their returns. Next slide, please. So this slide is probably one of the most important slides in the presentation just because it shows how UAL costs have been impacting the city's budget and will continue to impact the budget. And so shown in those blue bars are basically the amortization payments on that UAL debt. And if you look back at 2018 and 2019, the last time we were in front of city council, those payments were about 300,000. If you look at the current fiscal year, it's a little over 600,000. And then by the end of the decade, those payments are going to get, go up over a million dollars. And then they start to drop off after about 2037. And so this is what I mentioned earlier about the kind of irregular repayment shape to amortize that debt. So it's not, again, it's not a level payment for the next 30 years. You have essentially most of the payments to amortize the debt really concentrated over the next 10 to 12 years. And we, we refer to that as kind of the mountain peak in payments. And at the very, if, if nothing else, you know, this, these, these projections need to be built into the city's forecast and plan for. We also provide just an example of what would happen to these payments if Calpers does decide to reduce their target rate of return from 6.8 to 6.5%. So you can see that in the orange line. This isn't to say that Calpers is going to do this. We just want to show you a little bit more of a conservative scenario where they do ratchet down that assumption. You can see that your, your annual payments would go up to about 1.2 million from that $1 million mark.
Mike, can I ask a question if we can back up one slide? So the 2022 bar graph there, you see the negative percentage, and then you see the assumption number jump up to the 10 million. The, the following year, they, they almost meet their, their assumption percentage there, but you see it kind of just flatlines there. And then the, the year after, an even better rate of return in the stock market. But then, then again, flatlines there. Can you give, give me some insight as to why it's just kind of flatlined there for those three years?
Yeah, so it, it's, there's not a lot of movement there because Calpers was really close to their target rate of return. So there, if you look at 23, and we should have added some decimals to these numbers instead of rounded them, it would be a bit clear. So I apologize for that, but it, it did go up a little bit in 23 there because they missed their 6.8% target. They only earned 6.1. So when they miss, that increases the UAL. And that's why you see a really, really small increase in that gray bar. And then this past year, they earned 9.5. So again, about almost, you know, 1.8% higher than their goal. In that, that reduced it a little bit. There's other more technical assumptions that also flow through, but that's the main driver of those small movements. So if you, if, if Calpers, another thing to mention is that if Calpers were to just keep hitting their 6.8, that's obviously not going to happen every year, but if they did just meet their goal, your UAL will go down over time because you are amortizing that. So based on the current schedule that we were just looking at, if we go back to those bars, you know, this is, this kind of assumes that Calpers meets their, their goals over time. But even if they do that, you're still, you're still paying on this debt. And so this is really the schedule that will get you to, you know, fully funded 100% over time. But we note that every single year, this, this mountain peak is going to shift up, a little bit up or a little bit down based on Calpers returns.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep. We could go to the next slide if possible. And so the next, we, we end the presentation just looking at a few costs, some, some ideas to really get in front of that mountain peak in payments and provide a little bit of sample analysis just to so, show you one strategy that could be helpful. The strategies shown on this slide here are some strategies that have been utilized by other agencies, including the city of Riverbank. In gray there at the top, prepaying the UAL in each July in the beginning of the fiscal year is financially beneficial. You do get a discount from Calpers as opposed to paying it monthly. So as long as you have enough in reserves, it does make sense to do that. And the city is currently taking advantage of that, which is great. Negotiations with employees. The, the third one in teal there is what's called a fresh start amortization. And this is where you actually request from Calpers a new amortization schedule that's more level, similar to a mortgage. The challenge with that is that it does, Calpers requires you to actually shorten the term of that repayment. So your annual payments are quite a bit higher. The other downside is that once you do that, those new higher payments are locked in. So you can never go back to that old, old schedule. And because of that extra budgetary pressure, we don't see that option used very often. I would say the most common strategy utilized by, you know, hundreds of agencies across the state is shown in orange, which is essentially just paying more than your annual bill. And you can really do that in two ways. You can, number one there, the first sub-bullet point, you could take those monies and set up what's called a Section 115 trust. So this is a separate trust that is solely dedicated to pension and OPEB costs. So once you put that money in, it legally must be used for pension or OPEB costs. But it does really open the, open up the options for investment. So most Section 115 providers offer several different types of portfolios based on your risk tolerance. And then you can really decide when and how to use that. So if, you know, if you end up facing a really tough budget year, a few years down the road, you could actually pull money out of that trust and just use it to help offset the, the general fund burden. If things are going really well for the city, you can always take funds out and just, you know, pay down that UAL directly with Calpers. So you do have quite a bit of flexibility with that option. And we do know in, in talking with staff that the city has done a good job in building up some reserves that are earmarked for some sort of pension allocation, potentially a 115 trust, about 750,000 based on our conversation with staff. And then just lastly, that second sub-bullet under cash reserves, you can always take funds and just send it directly to Calpers and just start to pay down that $10 million debt directly. and just start to pay down that $10 million debt directly. And you do get a reduction in those amortization payments as well. The last one we won't touch on, it does relate to issuing bonds to pay off the UAL. But interest rates in the bond market, bond market are so high these days that there's really no savings to be had. So we won't talk too much detail about that one. Next slide, please. So the the next two slides just want to show the council graphically kind of how a reserve or basically a 115 trust can be used to really flatten down that that mountain peak and offset the burden on the general fund. So this chart here, those blue bars are the same blue bars that we were looking at on the prior page. And we assume that the city does put 750,000 into a 115 trust. We assume just for simplicity here that it earns 5%. And then what you can see there in the chart is that there's an orange dotted line and then there's some shaded blue above that. And so what we're assuming is that the city could actually start dipping into that trust, starting in 2028 or so, going all the way out to 2037 and use those trust assets to really help make those payments to Calpers each year. And that way, from a but a general fund budget perspective, you're you're just budgeting where that orange line is. So you you have some predictability there, and it does bring down the annual impact on the general fund. And then we, that in this example, instead of letting payments get up to that, you know, 1.1 million dollar level, this does level things out closer to the orange line, a little over 900,000. And then the second example, if we go to the next slide, we assume a a higher deposit amount. We're not saying that this is what the city should do. But generally, you know, the theory is that the more money you can put into this trust, the more you can offset payments down the road as that mountain peak in payment starts to hit the city's budget. So under this scenario, we assume one and a half million going into the 115. And again, starting to withdraw money as soon as 2026 or 2027. And under this scenario, you could bring down the payments closer to that $800,000 level, as you can see in that orange line. So again, this isn't a a final recommendation. But, you know, really, the 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 theory is that the more you can get into that trust, the more budget flexibility you'll have and the more prepared you'll be to bring down that that peak in payments. Next slide, please. I think we're just, we just have one slide left before we open it up to questions. We do have an appendix as well. If there's any questions that came up, we can potentially use some of that information back there. But just to conclude the conversation, we understand that the city has earmarked funds towards some sort of reserve or 115 trust. So as you saw from the analysis, that this can be very, very helpful to mitigate some of the pressure on the city's general fund. And as we mentioned, this is a, you know, a month and a half ago, when we were starting to put together this presentation, you know, the stock market was down, I think, 15%. We were getting word from Calpers that they were at 0%. So this presentation, we had to tweak it a bit because we were for for a short while preparing for a very large increase in the UAL. We have heard that Calpers has made back their money and is close to their goal now, which is good news. But as I mentioned, this fall, we are going to learn a lot more about any new assumptions that come out of the Calpers study. And most importantly, their discount rate, which is their target investment return. Of course, any changes to that are going to change a lot of the numbers in this presentation. So really important to revisit this again at some point next fiscal year. So with that, I'll I'll leave it open to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council, comments?
So I just got one comment. It's not really directed at Mike or Eric. But just for informational, for the residents here. So we have had a Trust 115 in in the works for about, you know, two years, give or take. It is kind of part of ours. I'm looking at the the map on the back wall there. It has been part of the previous strategic plan. And we have set aside the 750. Looking at the volatility of Calpers and what what we've been given this unfunded debt, and and the debt has to be paid. So I don't know if this council would be interested in supporting. But I I think we should get a little bit more aggressive with the with with the, instead of the 750, it is it is rate of return of 5%. So maybe we should consider the 1.5 million going, just just seeing the impact in the the level of payment drops over the years. So I don't know if that's something that the council would kind of consider or move forward to the next council meeting, bring it forward and actually putting it into practice and getting this Trust 115 to start earning some of this rate of return. Because at the moment, it's not, we're not earning any of it. So that's kind of where I'm at, where I would like to see us move forward so we can kind of game plan down the road for this.
Any other comments, questions? Any public comment?
Maybe there is no one wishing to speak.
All right, I believe that is it now.
Yes, that is all for the time being. At our next meeting, Tammy will be bringing forward our major fund budget workshop. So you'll have an opportunity to see if there are some good, you know, chances of us being able to increase that amount or, you know, based on our projections, whether those funds might be necessary elsewhere. So that certainly can be part of the conversation that we have on June 10.
Thank you. Item 7.3, a presentation, Community Development Department, Six-Cycle Housing Element Progress Update.
David Niskin and with J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning will provide this update today.
Thank you. And David Niskin and J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning here to present a progress report on the update to the city's housing element for the six cycle planning period. Just to provide a little bit of a background on this update, the housing element is one of the required elements of the general plan and covers an eight-year period from June 30, 2023 to December 31, 2031. The housing element, unlike the other elements of the general plan, such as land use, circulation, and so on and so forth, is reviewed by the Department of Housing and Community Development for compliance with state law, specifically housing element law. And just to give you kind of a step-by-step approach to the update, and you've seen this slide before and our other presentations, is that there's six major steps that we do for the update. The first is the public workshops, which is, we've conducted a few of those with councils as well as the Planning Commission. The public review process is kind of ongoing throughout the entire update. So it's not the only thing that we did. Step two is preparation of the housing element document, including the housing needs assessment, the sites inventory, the affirmatively furthering fair housing section, which is a new state law requirement. And then finally, developing the policies and programs of the document. Step three is presenting that document to Planning Commission and Council, which we did previously in 2024. And then step four is the 90-day review by HCD, which is the first HCD review draft that they did. And we're, right now, we're in the subsequent review period and addressing HCD's comments on their first round of review. Step five, following HCD's review and meeting all statutory requirements of housing element law, we'll bring back the housing element to Planning Commission and City Council for formal adoption. And then finally, there's another 60-day review by HCD, which in which they do a final review and certification of the housing element. This gives a pretty good timeline on what we have done and where we're at right now with the housing element update. The draft Six-Cycle Housing Element was published for a 30-day public review period from October 15 to November 20, November 14, 2024, and then presented to Planning Commission on October 15, and then subsequently to City Council on November 12, 2024. We formally submitted the document to HCD on December 2nd, December 2nd, after we reviewed and considered public comments that we received during the 30-day public review period. And we received comments after that 30-day as well, which we incorporated. All public comments were incorporated into the submittal as Appendix L. And we did our best to address all the public comments that were received during the update and will continue to do so through this update. On February 27, 2025, we received a letter from HCD describing revisions that are necessary to meet statutory requirements of housing element law. And since then, we've, staff has been working diligently on updating the housing element in a number of areas to meet HCD's comments. And the comments, and it's, that that comment letter is also published on the city's website for anyone to look at and download and and review. So there's that. And then the revisions that are described in the letter can be broken down into these categories. Housing needs and resources. Special needs housing. The sites inventory comments related to the sites that we've chosen to meet the city's obligation for RENA. Governmental and non-governmental constraints. And then finally, housing programs, because they do a review of the housing programs that we propose. And I just wanted to kind of break down each area of updates to the housing element. First, what we looked at and updated was the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis to include the analysis of the sites inventory, the contributing factors in analysis and identifying identifying meaningful actions to address AFFH. Now AFFH is a review of really four major categories. One is integration and segregation, analysis of race, ethnicity, neighborhood segregation, familial status, female-headed households. See kind of where those areas are at within the city by track and also by block group. And then also looking at, second is racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. That's a specific HCD analysis that we take and and review for the city. Third is the disparities of access to opportunities. So that's analysis of transit access, educational access, looking at areas of affluence, areas that have quality education, economic scores, and things of that nature. And then finally, number four, disproportionate housing needs. Looking at the age of structure, if there's areas of the city that have older housing stock compared to others. Looking at housing problems where that's a specific term that describes if a house has a lack of plumbing facilities or other issues, you know, integral to a house functioning. Housing cost burden, both for renting and for mortgage for homeowners. Overcrowding, homelessness, and displacement. And finally, that that kind of culminates into overall analysis of the sites inventory that we've selected as well as, you know, describing meaningful actions to address those AFFH factors. They could be as simple as updating the city's website to provide a little bit more information on fair housing and Project Sentinel and things of the things, county programs and things like that. Or it can be specific actions of like reaching out to nonprofit developers on a biannual basis and meeting those folks to describe where sites can be developed and things of that nature. So and that's all detailed in this section as well as in the section that describes the policies and programs. The next is we looked at and updated the special needs housing sections, provided additional information on persons with disabilities, farm workers, seniors, large and female-headed households, and included program references to those, as well as added programs related to code updates to meet new state law relating to low-barrier navigation centers, supportive housing, updates to the emergency shelters code to provide objective standards of where those can be developed, as well as what requirements that they need to meet and things like that. The next, and one of the kind of the major updates that we did, in which we took a look at the sites inventory and provided a more robust analysis of what the realistic capacity is for each land use category, what kind of densities we're using and how we back that up and show the state that the density for, you know, low-density residential makes sense using past examples and historical developments. And also looking at sites that are non-vacant and providing a criteria methodology in which we select those sites. And then also identifying sites that were utilized in the fifth cycle to meet the lower income need because that triggers a a state law requirement of requiring a buy right approval process for projects that require or that include more than 20% affordable lower-income units. And then also updating the sites inventory tables throughout and then the rezone list that you've seen before in the previous and the draft housing element. So this gives an updated sites inventory table. This is still in draft. We're still refining it a little bit. But what we've done is, and you'll see all the updates, by the way, in redline track changes in the housing element. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, so you'll see where the changes are made. But what we're showing is with the rezoned sites that we've selected and the communities helped us identify that the the city would meet the city's RENA, but there's still a short, a small buffer. You know, we kind of just meet it. And that's a little bit of a challenge just because of the number of units that were assigned to the City of Riverbank, as well as the number of lower-income units, meaning there's over 1,600 lower-income units that were assigned to the cities. That creates a unique, or not so unique, challenge to the city of Riverbank because a lot of cities are dealing with this. But identifying high-density residential residential sites was a little bit of a challenge. And we've had to be a little bit creative on our rezon sites, which the community helped us do in our workshop last year. But that's, as of right now, that's what our table is looking like. So like I said, we're still refining it a little bit. Oops. We also updated the constraints analysis, both governmental and non-governmental constraints related to development standards for multifamily developments, off-street parking, density, and zoning and fees transparency. There's new state law that requires a little bit more analysis related to when a project is developed and when the building permit is submitted. So analyzing that time in between those two, those two events, as well as providing a little bit more detail as relates to the analysis for development standards, both within the city's municipal code, as well as the specific plans, including the downtown specific plan in Crossroads West. We've identified a couple of areas that we can update to make it a little bit more flexible for higher-density development. We also updated the programs per state law. So in the new, in the updated second HCD review draft that'll be published soon, you'll see new programs related to the buy right approval process, meeting SB 35, which is a permit streamlining bill that went into effect a few years ago. Also providing a no-net loss program, which basically means that if a project comes in at a lower density than anticipated in the housing element, that there's a process that they make up those number of units and density. Also looking at the planning and financing transparency, which is a website updates to make sure all the fees are on the city's website. And then also tracking the wastewater treatment plant upgrades, which I believe you'll see a presentation on later on tonight. And then also consolidating the programs for the updates to the Riverbank Municipal Code so that there's, it's all together and there's a timeline, a discrete timeline for that. So what our timeline for the update as of right now is we're anticipating publishing the second HCD review draft for a seven-day public review period. That's state mandated by the, hopefully by the end of next week, if not early the following week. We're still making some minor revisions and working with staff on those. And then we're anticipating submitting that draft to the state for another 60-day review in June and then coming back to Planning Commission and Council in the fall for formal adoption. So hopefully, our next letter from the state is one that says that we're in statutory compliance or the comments are so minor that we can make the changes and move forward with the formal adoption. We know timing is critical in this update. And we're, you know, we're, we're trying to meet all the timing for it as well. And just wanted to reiterate that during the seven-day public review period, or even after, if the public has comments, there's multiple ways to get in contact with us and submit comments. One is to do it in writing and submit it to City Hall South. Another is emailing riverbankhousing@riverbank.org. That's a specific email setup for the housing element update. And then we're also maintaining a website, webpage on the website at a riverbankhousing, or riverbank.org/housingelement to provide updates. And that's where this published document will be here in the next couple of weeks. And then we're also including a table that has each of the HCD And then we're also including a table that has each of the HCD comments and then page references on where those comments can be addressed, where where those comments are addressed. And a response narrative on each of the comments. We also have a list of interested individuals and parties that want to be informed on the housing element. And we intend to be emailing them about the availability of the housing element document. And that concludes my presentation tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Any comments from the public?
I have one online. Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah. Good evening again. Gary Pearson, resident of Riverbank. First, I have just returned from a two week agricultural project in Toshkent, Uzbekistan. Aren't you say a city of 1.5 million residents? I spent my time knowing about the region exploring many aggravated issues, including greenhouses and farm production, including strawberries, tomatoes, cucumbers and eggplant, which are the primary vegetable. Toshkent is 6,000 miles from Riverbank. You don't not want to know the journey I had. And has similar issues as cost of housing, water, traffic and transportation. Moving about the city, we use the metro system, which does have move a lot of people efficiently and effectively. It's a good case study. Food was fantastic and diverse in presentation and style. The primary dish is called Osh. I'll leave you guys to figure that out. Toshkent people are very welcoming, peaceful, well educated and honor the older generation. If you get on a metro line, they actually stand up and let you sit in the seat. I felt welcomed and shown respect as an American from central California. But now on the housing elements. As of today, the median price of homes today in Riverbank range between 350 and 725,000. The current market, as of today, there are 53 homes on the market. Under 500 K, there are 17 listings. Between five and 600 K, there are 23 listings. Between six and 700 K, there are 11 and there's none above 800 K. Interest rates continue to be high between 6.5 and 6.7. The bottom line is we need more affordable housing for our city. And I would say the city needs to stay within its sphere of influence. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Mayor. Oh, we have one more.
Thank you, Gabby. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
This is Jamie Agers. Thank you, council for bringing this presentation forward this evening. I was one of many people who reviewed the housing element and submitted comments and have also reviewed the state's letter, which was pretty voluminous in its listing of deficiencies. So I've been wondering what the status of the revised element was. So this is very helpful. On the interested party list, so I'm assuming I will be notified when the revised draft is released for its next review period. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, my figures. Mayor, that is all.
All right. Are there any further comments or questions from council? Thank you very much. A 7.4 presentation regarding Brown Act compliance and best practices for social media activity.
Your counsel, Doug White with White Brenner. So a pleasure to be here tonight. Good to see y'all again. It has Nubia's name on her, but I said she can't have all the fun. So I decided to come take the meeting tonight. So we make sure I'm going in the right way though. Yeah, okay. So so tonight we're going to talk about Brown Act. I know everybody's favorite subject. But specifically, we want to talk and hit on social media and kind of some best practices. So with that, we got a couple of components that we want to go through. Specifically, we want to touch on AB 1992, which in a few years, it kind of changed the rules, what we can do and provide some clarity. And then, and then we'll give some examples and kind of work our way through it. So the the goal tonight is to educate everybody about the Brown Act, AB 1992 and the best practices. We want to make sure that the city is operating in a transparent and accountable way and is completely legally compliant when using social media, which candidly, I'm going to tell you right now that some of the things I'm going to tell you don't make a whole lot of sense and aren't really that practical and functional. And I think kind of hinder some of the goals that the Brown Act set to put in place. But they are still the rules and so we want to make sure we know at least what we're expected to do and try to adhere to those as much as we can. So so I'm going to tell you, I disagree with many of the things that the state did when they put this together, and I think it works against the goals. That being said, it's the rules and so let's go through them. So the Brown Act you can find in the government code, starting in 54950. It's the it's been in California law for some times. It's the open meeting law. And it has really been an instrumental law that a lot of other states and have followed to make sure that we have, you know, meetings that are open, that that the business of the cities is conducted in front of the public and not in back rooms. It's not always the most convenient or easy to use and it's frustrating. But it really does, I think, accomplish the the goal of making sure the business is done out in the open where folks can actually have input on it and see the decisions and the debate that that takes place. Some of the key requirements are that the meetings must be in public. So again, no back room meetings, except for some exceptions like we have tonight when we go into closed session. Meetings have to be posted at least 72 hours in advance for regular meetings to allow public participation. There is a shorter time period of 24 hours for special meetings. And in in an emergency meetings, it can happen, but that is so rare. I've only had it happen once or twice in my entire career, which is a little long now. So action items, any action taking taken must be publicly noticed and discussed. So you can't take action unless those components happen. And you can't have serial serial meetings. And we're there's some examples of that. So I'll just leave that at that right this morning. Well, it's next time. So serial meetings are a series of communications relating to government business that each involve less than a quorum of the legislative body. But taken as a whole involve a quorum of the members. So there may be only two of you in any one meeting, but you've conducted a meeting in such a way that it's like three, four or five of you have all conducted in part of that meeting. Serial meetings are prohibited because again, it violates kind of the whole premise of the Brown Act, which is to have meetings in open so and transparent. And it's easy, as I've said, because some of this is a little bit hard, easy to unknowingly violate that and be vigilant. And, you know, you want to watch out for individuals that can be conduits. And sometimes that can be staff or constituents and it's not on purpose. It's just it it just happens. You know, one of the little keys that we'll talk about is, you know, not talking about how you're going to actually vote, taking in information, things of that nature, but not taking in watching, you know, what you say very, very carefully. Because if you don't say anything, pretty hard to ever have a serial meeting. So just one of those little quick clues. Examples of serial meetings are the daisy chain. So they go meet with member A, then B, then C, then D and E. And they're asking you all how you're going to vote on a particular item that they have an interest in. And so they know the outcome of the vote before the vote has ever ever occurred. And I think one of the important things to remember when you go through this is you really aren't supposed to make up your mind. You may have, you know, leanings and things of that nature of how you think you're going to vote when you walk into a meeting. But really, until public comment is closed, you're not to you're not to form your final opinion. The idea is that you still have an open mind and heart to being able to take in any comments that people make at that meeting to be able to persuade you one way or the other. The other one, the hub and spoke, which happens quite often with the staff meeting. Member is they'll have a meeting with A and then B and C and D. So in this case, it's it's a single hub, a single person. The other one, Daisy Chain can potentially be different, different people. Doesn't have to be a singular person that that creates that, but the people, say it's an advocacy group. And there's a group of folks who have a certain position that they want you to take. They it's been different members who have met with you, but they all know how you're going to basically vote before you go walk in. So let's give you an example. So an agenda in our first scenario, an agenda is posted and the clerk sends the meeting announcement via email. A board member responds by email to the entire group. So all the city council members, which is I always say don't BCC council members don't ever CC even for staff. That's a good that's a good hint so that they don't, somebody doesn't accidentally hit the CC and be like, ah, didn't mean to do that. Which is how we talk about easy to fall into kind of technical violations. But a board member responds by email to the entire group that they thought an item relating to the water plant upgrades had been decided and maybe they even gave their opinion. And then two other board members reply back that issues are still pending. So has a serial meeting occurred? Yes. Because you had a discussion of business and that's a violation. So one of the things that isn't a violation to kind of give you the counter to that. If you're just reaching out, okay, hey, we're going to do a special meeting. Is everybody available? Things like scheduling and things of that nature, even if everybody's responding, that's okay. You can you can know whether or not other folks are available. So so just scheduling a meeting, even though that's city business that there is an exemption for that. So we kind of get into social media, which is which has taken, you know, an already complicated issue and made it more complicated. Particularly because many people on council, you work together. A lot of you had relationships before you even ran for council. You have relationships with staff and and things of that nature and you're all friends and maybe you're all a good, some of you are Facebook friends before you ever ran. And then it doesn't seem like the greatest thing to do to get elected and then unfriend somebody and stuff. And then yeah, have everybody ask you why you just unfriended unfriended, you know, the mayor or something like that. Yeah, I thought you guys liked each other. Yeah. But anyway, so direct messaging and group chat. So using social media, which is the broad umbrella of Facebook, Instagram, things that are available to the public. To communicate about city matters can violate the Brown Act if those communications lead to a serial meeting, even if it's not in person. So it doesn't have to be in person communication. It doesn't even have to be like by email or text messages. It can be direct messages, DMs. It can be as we're going to get into, it can be just posts on Facebook or Instagram comments. It can be emojis. Best practices, avoid using direct language or closed group chats for discussions about city business, at least if if within that group is somebody who's a who's a council member. So just just don't DM other council members. For those of my council members who don't want to strictly adhere to it, it's like at least just make it about their kids or the sports that they're involved in. Don't even skirt the line about, you know, the pothole or the stop sign or lack of the stop sign. So let's get into AB 19, I mean 992 and how that's kind of affected things in the last couple of years. So AB 1992, 992 went into effect in 220 and it amended the Brown Act and it tried to clarify because there was a lot of ambiguity on how to use social media in this modern world about what you could and could not do. And it's an attempt an attempt with a good intent to try to adapt the Brown Act for these modern tools that we they we use that are going to continue to evolve with AI and things of that nature. The key provisions are permitted social media interactions. Members of a legislative body may use social media to perform platforms to communicate with the public about matters within their agency's jurisdiction. And I know some of you do that really, really well. This includes answering questions, providing information or soliciting input from the public. But when you do that, you can imagine if you have some council members in your friend groups and they're seeing that that could has the potential, at least of raising an issue because you're talking about publicly about some of your city business. I'm not going to get into definition. We already gone through that. The sunset clause AB 992 is set to run out in 2026. We expect it to be extended or clarified. And so hopefully some of these clarifications will make it easier to use. But but as of right now, this is kind of where we're at. So with that, I think let's get into a little bit of the language. Members of the legislative body are prohibited from responding directly to social media posts made by other members of the same legislative body regarding agency business. So that's pretty clear. This includes actions such as commenting. So even though it's not in the main text, you just can, even if it's like, good job, you know, or thanks for attending that meeting, that can that can be a comment. Replying, depending on where you're at. So if it's a comment and then you reply within the comments. Sharing, sending it to others. Hey, wanted to let you know that that this council member thought this about on this issue. Or using digital reactions like likes or emojis. Even minimal minimal interactions can constitute a violation if they involve discussing agency business. I've had this happen several times in several different cities. Every single time it has been completely unintentional and and very innocent. It has disproportionately been about traffic issues and stop signs and potholes and things of that nature.
Seems to me when you do this that our citizens citizens would think we're just being rude to each other because we're not coming.
Correct. Correct. But but the idea is that the that the dais is sacrosanct, you know, and that this is the official place for that type of business to be conducted. Not out there. And so I will tell you just candidly that what, you know, when we do our initial, you know, you just get elected and we do kind of like our introductory kind of meetings. It has always been my recommendation that you unfriend each other. So I know it seems you, again, you just got elected and and the last thing you want to do is be rude. Right? But 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 I do just so that it just avoids it. It avoids that. At a minimum, what you want to do is you just want to literally never comment, like if they want to see pictures of your kids. And so I don't want to unfriend you because I need to see your kids. I need to see your farm. I need to, you know, your agriculture, whatever it is. Just don't ever comment like and if you do it accidentally, just undo it really quickly. But just don't, you know, just stay out of that that realm. And it's very, very tempting because what you will find is and this is how sometimes it starts is there'll be somebody in the comment section who will call out another council member. Right? And you want to respond because maybe they're saying something or misinterpreting your position. Or they're going to or they're they're saying, hey, I think such and such feels the same way about this. And so it's really, really, really tempting to go in there and say, you know, yes, wait, no, but you can't do it.
Yeah, I saw your post. Just want to let you know.
You can you can text the person, the person who made the comment, so long as they're not accounts. Well, as long as there's not.
So let's say Luis made a post and I agree with him and I just text him and say, hey, Luis, I saw your post. I just want to let you know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Not saying my opinion.
As long as nobody else does does the same text to him, you know, because where it gets complicated is I'm going to pick on council member call. Let's say she says you'd already shared the host and I mean, or the post and then she, you know, calls where, you know, shares, hey, did you see this? You see what they're saying about you?
Or even just acts, you know, just liking, you know, just the comment or just any kind of interaction in the post, even though we're allowed to interact one on one with, you know, one agenda item. Once it spreads beyond that, then that's that's a no go.
Yep. Yep. So social media is incredibly dangerous. The temptation is so high. And the other problem is it's memorialized for all to see the mistake. And so it makes it a little bit hard to kind of like, you know, like like don't like it, don't like, don't don't not like it. It just makes it very difficult to to, you know, those who want to be detractors to come and say, gotcha.
Somebody posts, for example, on Instagram, like there's been a lot of posts going around about the memorial.
Yep.
And I've shared it to my Instagram page. That's okay.
That's fine. And each each of you could share that individually. Now you wouldn't be able to forward it to everybody and say, hey, you might want to do this on your Facebook, you know?
No, I just.
And you get. So so, yeah, and it doesn't mean like if, you know, let's say the mayor decides to share something and council member call decides it was a really great idea, right? Just because you got the idea from there doesn't mean that you can't individually go and and post that same thing. And it happens a lot like with events, you know, hey, just wanted to make sure, you know, the farmer's marker, the wine stroll, you know, things of that nature.
So if we're partnering up on an effort together, can we like and share the same post? Because it's just two of us?
You can.
Okay. Yeah, like that.
It's just it's dangerous, right? Like, you know, but yes. Yeah, because you're only one one council member away. But yes, you can, as long as you're under a quorum, you're always. I mean, I mean, the key to the the Brown Act, when you think about it, as long as you're under a quorum and what you're doing. I mean, and, I mean, the key to the, the Brown Act, when you think about it, as long as you're under a quorum in what you're doing, no matter what it is, you're always gonna be safe, right? But, a good practice is generally speaking, to not do it. There can be exceptions, there can be exceptions, but let they, let them be known exceptions that you're violating the rule, because you know you're not going to violate. Meaning, you have a rule that just generally you don't comment, or you don't share the same things. That's, that's your, that's your default rule. So when you break the rule, that you're not gonna do that, because you do something together, that's fine, so long as you guys know that you're doing that, and you're purposely making sure that nothing happens, that it's gonna involve another councilman. As long as they're not telling you to. Like, you, you've heard it tonight, and you said, well, this is a great idea, now I'm gonna go post it, yeah. So yeah, you're fine, okay. Individually.
Don't send us anything, okay, nobody.
Yeah, so the key here, um, in government code five-four-nine-five-two-point-two, where some of this is memorialized, is the highlighted part at the bottom, which sorry, the contrast isn't as high, maybe to be able to clearly see it, but it says, a member of the legislative body may not respond directly to any communication on internet, social media platform regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of a legislative body that is made, posted, or shared by any other member of the legislative body. So the exception to that is what we just talked about, like you still have to go to, so. All right. Social media best practices, we, we've kind of gone through this a little bit, you know? Is it okay to post agendas and meeting information? You know, abs- absolutely, you know, don't, don't have the mayor, you know, should be staff, you know, the staff sends it out to you, it's still, you know, it's still fine, that's not a hub necessarily in spoke type thing. You can share the meeting and the information, you can do it independently, just don't, don't collaborate about how you're gonna do it, right? Transparency, um, ensure that all public-facing information to social media is in compliance with the Brown Act, uh, keeping discussions transparent and open to all. Uh, public records compliant, so this is another key component, all social media communications related to the city may be considered a public record that has to, that if somebody does a PRA request, that we have to actually go through and respond to and, and, and kind of memorialize. And use dedicated channel, can't, I'm sorry, use dedicated channels, considering setting up a specific official social media account for the, for the city or council, to communicate public information rather than mixing it with personal accounts. Now, for those of you who have had political accounts, like, keep them completely separate, right? Like, you know, you, doesn't mean you can't post some of the same, you know, information on there, but you also don't want people to confuse political activities with your government activities, because then that could create a whole bunch of confusion and problems. So I would, I've always encouraged folks to have like, different dedicated, you know, political accounts versus, versus, um, official accounts.
And, and even then, some of the residents don't see the separation there, right? They, they still see that, you know, even though it's, I, and I do have two different ones, and there's some residents that they just don't see the separation. I, I could be making a comment about something in my personal life, and I try to not be political, but sometimes I can be on my personal page, and sometimes that'll translate over to my city council stuff when I'm not trying to be, and it just, it's hard to avoid.
It is, it, it is. I think the biggest thing is at least when you have different political accounts, it's harder for people to mix up, or at least it's easier for you to clarify quickly for them, hey, look at, this is that type of account, this is it. It also, if you ever did get into dispute, it makes it clear what kind of speech it is, because political speech does have elevated protections, that, you know, even supersede the Brown Act and things of that nature. Uh, don't, don't discuss city business on private channels, and do not use, a- again, and this is within the context of, of y'all. Avoid serial meetings, as we've kind of talked about them, and avoid, uh, avoid personal opinions. So, council members should avoid giving personal opinions on social media about agenda items or city business, as this could create public perceptions of bias. So this is a little bit different of it, of an issue than the one we were talking about previously. This is where you don't want to give the idea that you have formed a conclusion on a particular issue that you were going to later be asked to vote on. So, because if you, because the whole premise is, it's not an open meeting in a different context. If you've already made up your mind before a public comment how you're gonna vote. And so in that context, um, you have what, what we would deem legal bias, and you could be excluded from a vote on that, because you have had, you've taken a definitive legal, you know, definitive political, or not political, but a definitive, um, legislative decision. So always leave yourself open, if, if you are gonna communicate, communicate a personal opinion, like, let's just talk about the stop sign, hey, I have, I'm concerned about this stop sign, I need to know what people want to, I need to know what other people think. Or, you know, so in one of my other cities, we've had a, uh, issues with electric scooters and some kids who've gotten hit on cars, because they're going too fast on the electric scooters, and they don't know that they're subject to the helmet law. They've gotten hit, and we've had two really bad, not deaths, but tragedies, um, in, in those cities. And so, you know, you go out and post, hey, wear your helmet, don't go too fast, don't dart in front of, you know, traffic. Say, hey, I think we need to look at, so that would be a statement that, while fine in concept, probably doesn't, doesn't work. What, the better way of saying it is something like that, I'm really concerned about all the kids that have gotten into accidents on these motorized scooters who are not wearing their helmets. I want to, I, I think we need to look at this as a council, and I need the public's input on it, on what we need to do, right? So, so make sure, I think one of the easiest ways to provide your, yourself some, some out, if you're doing that, is to always ask, I want to hear from the public on what you think about this. This is a concern, it's not a decision. It's, it's, this is a concern I have, I'd like to hear from the public and, and, you know, and I'd like to have that be brought to the city council to, to do it. Um, so setting boundaries, uh, again, this is, this is a little bit of what, what we talked about, it's just setting some rules for yourself, so that if you ever do violate the, these rules, that you're really clear on why. Um, and that you've done it in such a way that you've thought through, to make sure that you're legally compliant, so that'd be similar to our discussion that we just had about the flyer. And then, again, I think we, I don't want to hit this too much, but just respect for the public participation process. So tools, policies, and resources. So establish a clear and specific social media policy for city council members that aligns with the Brown Act and AB nine-nine-two. I don't think we built that into the handbook yet, so that could be potentially something that you add in if you want to. The handbook is always something that we try to ride this careful balance about how specific we, we get, how many things that we cover, uh, because we don't want to dilute it, right? We want people to actually use it and to be comprehensible. So this is just, it's something that you can think about. Uh, I think ongoing training for both, uh, uh, council and staff is always helpful. And I think it's always helpful to do this in the public, so that the public knows, A, that you're getting this training, and they can hear the training that you're getting, and, and some of the things that you're being asked, that's gonna be asked, that's asked of you. Uh, and then, just a reminder that these posts are public records, and they may need to be turned over, and so be mindful, you know, mindful of that, your, your status of citizens is very different once you got elected and swore that oath. You have a little bit less privacy than, than you had before. But you gave that up to do great things for the city, and so it's, yeah, oh, it's good. And you guys have a lot to do, be proud of it. So, so that's overview. Well, we've gone over this, so I, I, I don't want to waste time. I think the biggest thing is, I, I want to make clear that this doesn't get rid of two-two-and-ones. So if you've ever heard of that practice, and I say this because I want the public to know that whenever they ever hear that you did a two-two-and-one, or a one-one-one-one-one, looks like a, a, a spoken hub, that that's not a violation, because the goal for us as staff is not to, not to, um, get you to, to ask you how you're gonna vote or form a conclusion. The goal in those situations is to get you information, so that you can be prepared for the meeting, so that you can ask some questions, so that you can be prepared for the meeting. So, when we go and we meet, talking about a subject in and of itself is not a Brown Act violation. It really comes down to taking away from what happens that's special at this dais, which is the folk, the, the ability of you guys not to make a decision, or have something be predestined before the public comes and, and walks up and gives their input. And so that's what we want to protect. And I think when you think of it that way, with the exception of some of these social media rules, then, then it becomes kind of a logical extension that I think is easy to understand. Again, some of the social media stuff, I think, in my own opinion, goes against some of that logic, but they're the rules, so we have to go over it. Them's the rules. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have, or the, the public has, but, um, happy to be here tonight, good to see y'all.
Thank you. Any, I know we were discussing already, but more comments, questions? How about from the public?
It's my scary face.
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Yeah, if you get, if you get, if you get unfriended a whole bunch of times today, don't be offended.
Yes, unfortunately, I stay off of Facebook groups, it's good, Rob, real quick. Um, okay, thank you, um. So, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of city council honorary board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon.
Uh, Mayor, I only have one on Zoom.
This is Jamie Agers, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Agers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the council for a couple of things. First, the Sigma presentation tonight was, um, excellent, it was very helpful. Second, the opportunity for the public to participate recently in the strategic planning session. And lastly, um, for the upcoming Riverwalk meeting in early July, and I'm hoping that one of the things that will be discussed is a timeline for when the final draft environmental impact report will be out. Thank you.
Mayor, that is all I have.
Hello, my name is Christian, and I'm a part of, or I am representing Riverbank High School, and I'm making a public comment today to advocate or propose the idea of a youth council. So I think the idea of a youth council is an excellent idea, as it helps, um, youth voice themselves or their concerns, and, uh, I think that in, in the youth, uh, in Riverbank, they have a really like, lost a lot of hope, and I, like, overall, and I think, um, with a few leaders starting this youth council, we could kind of revitalize that hope in our community. And, um, I think this youth council can help give students an opportunity to make change, or, um, kind of voice themselves in decision-making for our city, and I'm here partnered with, um, someone from the Youth Inspire Academy, my friend Juan, if you'd like to say anything.
I'll give some public comment. Uh, hi, my name's Juan, they, yes, um, I am a facilitator for the Youth Inspire Academy, and, um, you know, first I just want to thank, uh, the mayor, council, um, staff, over the last like, six weeks. Um, some of our youth have been working on projects all around, like, about, um, environmental justice, or on water quality, waste management, mental health needs, water pollution, and income inequalities, uh, throughout the city of Riverbank. And, um, you know, some of you guys have part, participated in that process, um, by doing, um, public records requests, um, by doing interviews with our students, providing, um, information that would help us in, in terms of their presentations and their projects. Um, so today, we did, um, we did our, day one of our, um, culmination celebration for our, our project, our Youth Inspire Academy. Um, we had two, uh, presentations today on STEM accessibility in Riverbank, um, school district and agricultural environmental impacts. Um, day two is what I want to invite you to. Um, on June sixth, at five-thirty to seven, at the Riverbank, um, cafeteria, we'll be doing, um, another culmination. Um, and that day, we'll be talking about water quality, waste management, mental health needs, water pollution, and, and income inequality that day. Um, and so, uh, thank you for your participation in this process, and, um, we were here to talk about, um, the youth, um, council that was proposed and, um, or being taught, I think, being thought through. Um, and so I don't know if that was rescheduled for another meeting, but definitely want to be, take part in this, um, those discussions and continuing to see how we can make a great impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I think most, we already, we're all stopped here, okay. So, excuse me, consent calendar. Um, item nine-point-one, rate wave readings. This is gonna take me a while. Uh, item nine-point-two, which one's the one we're pulling here? Nine-five-E. Okay, I can do that when we get there. Uh, nine-point-two, approve all the city council honorary development authority board minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, nine-three. Resolution adopting the list of projects for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six funded by SB one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. Nine-four, resolution to approve and adopt twenty twenty-five City Riverbank Measure L expenditure plan project list. And items nine-five A through D. A resolution for each of the lighting districts to one, initiate proceedings for the annual levy of assessments, two, declare its intention to levy annual assessments, and three, for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The landscape and lighting districts are nine-five-A, consolidated landscaping and lighting district, nine-five-B, Ridgewood Place landscaping and lighting district, nine-five-C, River Cove landscaping lighting district, nine-five-D, Sierra Vista Estates landscaping and lighting district. So we're gonna pull nine-five-E for separate consideration, and then item nine-six, resolution for each of the following storm drain maintenance districts, declaring its intention to levy and collect annual assessments for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The storm drain maintenance districts are nine-five-A, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District number two, two thousand six zero one, nine-five, or nine-six-B, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District number zero five zero one. And then, nine-seven, a resolution to approve the award for the Parks Landscape Maintenance Contract to Grover Landscape Services, Inc. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, nine-point-one to nine-point-five, A through D, nine-point-six and nine-point-seven.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
All right, so council member Call recues herself, so we can consider nine-five-E.
Um, she does not have to step down from the dais, since we're not gonna be doing a presentation, so the rest of council can proceed.
All right, so is there a motion for item nine-five-E?
I make a motion to approve nine-five-E.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Um, new business, item eleven-point-one, Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project Council reaffirmation of the resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five nineteen, adopting the addendum to the initial study mitigated negative declaration document prepared for the Riverbank Regional Water Recycle Project.
Mayor and council, this item was brought before you at the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting, now based on some feedback from the state, uh, water board. Um, we are bringing this back after a public comment period that is required as part of their process. Um, so it was not required as part of SEQA, which was why it was not offered the first time, um, but the water board's specific regulations, um, asked that we go ahead and open this up for public comment, so we are bringing this back, and Cody Bridgewater, your director of public works, will provide the report.
Since the report and presentation was so interesting, the first find, we want to give you a second opportunity. The presentation outline, um, as stated before, provides a high-level summary of the project, reviews requirements under SEQA, summarizes the initial study findings and the environmental review, review process, and presents the ISMND addendum information and presents recommended actions. So, the project summary, uh, we will increase capacity to meet current, which is approximately one-point-six million gallons per day and future, thirty-year projection of two-point-two million gallons per day of wastewater through our treatment facility. Each new home is expected to produce approximately two-hundred gallons of wastewater per day, and this provides an alternative to expansion of our existing percolation disposal. The treatment to improve the water quality, the project integrates nitrogen removal that is not practical or with our current pond treatment, and reduces reliance on percolation disposal and load to ponds. And it will address concerns regarding groundwater nitrogen and compliance with discharge, discharge requirements, which is, um, in our basin plan. which is in our basin plan for amendment for nitrates. And also, the project allows for current and future beneficial reuse of water resources. So recycled water can be used for agricultural irrigation and reduce the reliance on local groundwater, which essentially is in lieu recharge. Is a possible revenue source for the disposal and recycled water activities and establishes a basis for future expansion and additional uses of recycled water within the city. Some project development history. April of 2016, council received a presentation on reconnaissance opportunities for recycled water. In August of 2017, a council presentation of the reconnaissance study with discussions of drivers for projects, including regulatory policy, capacity, and phasing. October of 17, council authorized to submit applications for two planning grants to study recycled water. August of 2020, council presentation and input to draft recycled water studies and master plan analysis. In October of 2020, City Council presentation of recycled water and study master plan analysis and input. In June of 2021, City Council meeting presenting the public review drafts of the recycled water planning studies and master plan reports. September of 21, City Council presentation of the final reports for submittal to the State Water Resources Control Board. September of 22, regular meeting of the City Council, including review of overall project need, scope and schedule with council input to potential project phasing, and currently planned project scope consistent with the project as described in the ISMND. December of 2022, City Council adopted the initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. And in March of 2025, council adopted the original amendment to the ISMND, which we are now bringing back to you for re-adoption, new adoption, purview to the comment period required by the state. So SEQA requires the lead agency, which is City of Riverbank, to consider potential environmental impacts or effects of the proposed action and disclose the effects to agencies and the public, and incorporate mitigation to reduce significant effects. And in compliance with SEQA, the city prepared the initial study, which is the environmental analysis, the mitigated negative declaration, which is the findings, and the addendum to the ISMND for the new boundaries of the treatment plant project. These new boundaries include one area, which is in Pond P9. And this was revised to show a borrow pit, essentially, an area to farm dirt that is going to be utilized throughout the project. The project actually entails taking Pond T2 out of service, filling it with dirt, bringing it up to existing ground level, and building our infrastructure there. So we will utilize the dirt from Pond P9 throughout the facility for the upgrade project. This saves costs to the city by not having to purchase imported dirt for fill material. And then we have a new route for our recycled waterline Pipeline B, which previously existed in Henry Road, which is the lone and sole access to the treatment facility, moving it into the Jacob Meyer Park area so that that water can be delivered to the east side of the bridge. This area is, exact area in Jacob Meyer's Park is determined at this point, but we do know that it will be somewhere in the vicinity of the park itself. So the project would result in potentially significant impacts related to biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. But incorporation of mitigation measures identified in the original ISMND reduce these impacts to less than significant levels. So no changes to these impacts occur based on the changes of the project description as defined in the addendum. The final ISMND incorporates minor text changes, and mitigation monitoring reporting program incorporates all mitigation measures identified in the ISMND. The SEQA addendum was, like Maricela said, adopted on March 25th to 2025. Following this adoption, based on consultation with Water Board, it was determined that although it's not a SEQA requirement, the Water Board requires a public comment period for addendums. So the addendum was posted to the State Clearing House for public comments from April 22nd, 2025 through May 6th. And one comment, one comment letter was received during this time from San Joaquin Council of Governments. And responses to the comments provided in this letter were prepared and require no changes to the addendum. The response to comments is included as Exhibit A in your staff report. The recommended actions are for City Council to rescind the adoption of Resolution 2025-019 and adopt the addendum to the initial study/ mitigated negative declaration subsequent to the public comment period required by the State Water Resources Control Board, sign and file the notice of determination on San Joaquin County, and pay the county administrative and California Department of Fish and Wildlife SEQA filing fees, and file the notice of determination with the State Clearing House. And be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
You, any council comments or questions? Comments or questions from the public?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
All right, I will bring it back to council if there's no further comments or questions. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 11.1 for the reaffirmation of the resolution.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay, are you staying up here for this one? 11-2, resolution to approve an option for street sweeping services.
So mayor and council, this item is being brought before you based on a letter that we received from Jilton Solid Waste with regards to the street sweeping services that they provide to all of the cities within their jurisdictions and no longer providing that service to them. And so we did go out to explore a couple of options that we're bringing forward to you tonight. Cody Bridgewater will provide the presentation. But Tammy El Cantor, your Assistant City Manager, and Kathleen Klick, the Capital Projects and Regulatory Compliance Manager, are also available for questions as they all participated in the preparation of this report.
November 12th of 2024, city manager received a letter from Jilton Solid Waste stating that their intent to discontinue providing street sweeping for the city of Riverbank. In December of 2024, the city sent out a request for proposal for street sweeping services, which were due by January 21 of 2025, and we received one proposal from Sweeping Corp. of America. Staff will be proposing the following options for the city's street sweeping services. Option 1 is contracting with Sweeping Corp. of America. Option 2A, the city would purchase a sweeper, which is in one-time monies, and perform the sweeping themselves. Option 2B, the city purchases the sweeper through a lease option offered by the vendor. And just a little bit of information, previous cost, the city's previous contract with Jilton Solid Waste for sweeping services was approximately $118,000 per year funded through our gas tax fund. So option 1 is the contract with Sweeping Corp. of America. Some pros, the contractor furnishes all labor, equipment, supervision, materials, fuel, maintenance needs. They have experienced and qualified drivers, and backup equipment is available if their regular unit goes down. Some cons are we have no local control, extra costs for callouts on emergencies or accidents or special events, and an increase in the annual cost of service.
Cody?
Yes.
On, with Jilton, did we have much extra cost? Did they call, they charge us for extra costs?
If we had, if we had to call them out for an additional service, it would be a minimal impact on the budget itself. It's basically a curb footage charge. They charge by the linear distance they would sweep. So year one, the proposal from Street Sweeping, or Sweeping Corp. of America, was $250,192. We had an annual average increase over the life of the contract of $132,000 if we were to go with Sweeping Corp. of America. Option 2A is the one-time purchase of a sweeper. The pros are quicker response time for complaints, missed routes, or accidents, emergencies, no additional cost for callouts. The sweeper unit can be utilized for city projects or events at no additional cost. And we have the addition of a full-time staff member to, which would be driving the sweeper portion of their shift, say, you know, three to four days. One week, the next, the following week, they would be available to assist in the shop as we are actually looking to hire a part-time employee for assistance. So we would be able to utilize this employee in the shop. This employee would also be responsible for all of the maintenance and services of that sweeper unit. It would be basically their baby. So when they're not sweeping, they're doing the maintenance and the upkeep on it, and also helping out in the shop itself. The cons are hiring an additional full-time staff member, increased fuel expenses and maintenance costs due to the additional equipment, and we would not have a backup unit available immediately during mechanical failures. The fiscal impact for the one-time purchase, and this does not include the actual purchase of the machine, this is the staff and maintenance costs, which would be $134,940.26. Year 2, $148,434. And year 3, $163,277. Total over the three years, $446,652 and some change. Average annual distance would be the $20,517.09 increase from the existing Jilton contract.
Thanks for covering that, Cody. I was going to ask why the cost of the sweeper wasn't included in year one. Thank you.
So if we look at option 2B, which is the lease purchase of the equipment, it would be either a four, five, or a six-year term. The pros, again, same as the one-time purchase. As well as the cons, the only difference here is the purchase method of the unit itself. So we would actually have an annual increase of $120,000 to $90,000 over those three years of the, of the potential contract that we would have with SCA. And that's what we compared everything to, that three-year contract window of option 1 with Sweeping Corp. of America. So you can see, we range from 204 to 234 year 1, and 232 to 262 year 3, depending on the term of the lease itself. We reached out to three separate vendors for quotes on machines, and we got a quote for a RAVO R5I series, Schwars Model A4 Storm, and a Timco Model 600. While it is more expensive, staff is proposing we purchase the Timco Model 600 as it is the same unit that is currently operated by Jilton Solid Waste. This allows us to take advantage of the wealth of maintenance knowledge and experience that Jilton has with this equipment. And Timco is the leading manufacturer and selected brand in the sweeping industry. These other two models, the RAVO and the Schwars, are both manufactured outside of the United States, so it makes it very difficult to receive parts for these machines when they are down.
And what is the lifetime of the sweepers?
I believe Jilton is getting about seven to eight years out of theirs, but they run theirs 40 hours a week. Every week out of the year. Ours would be run maybe a third of that. So I'm expecting 10 to 12 years out of it if we, you know, use proper maintenance and people don't put things in the street that aren't supposed to be in the street.
So most of my questions were kind of, you know, answered in agenda prep. I was kind of curious about the warranty, with the two-year warranty, if we went the purchase route. The lifespan, like mayor had asked, it's a, depending on usage, of course, average 10 to 15. Obviously, way less if you're using it a lot more. I did have some questions about partnerships. That's all still kind of pending. And then some rental options as a backup in case our purchase option goes down in a year and we're waiting for who knows what, right? And so most of my questions were answered, so I'm just kind of curious to see where the rest of the council is at.
And with regards to the backup, Kathleen Klick did reach out to Jilton Solid Waste. Obviously, they have existing equipment that they will no longer be using. They didn't think it was fit for a sale to the city because of the age of the equipment. But if our machine went down for some reason, they felt that it would be appropriate and available for us to be able to use in the interim.
Yeah. That's recommendation is the approval of option 2A as the preferred course of action. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from council?
I agree. I think it'd be nice to do number one because we would not have that responsibility, but the cost is pretty high. I think purchasing is much better than leasing since we do have the funds available. Are they in the gas fund or general? General, okay. I agree. It's a good choice.
What else? Any public comment?
We have one on Zoom, mayor. You have, you have one ready? Come on in.
Richardson, 3126, Stanislas. I was just wondering if there was any reason that Jilton decided to stop the sweeping business?
Yes, that was due to the Department of Labor Relations increasing the pay rate that they would have to pay their employees. And basically, what would end up happening is Jilton would have to pay them at a rate that was significantly higher than their garbage, the gentleman, the folks that collect their garbage. And they didn't feel that that would be equitable for them, so.
Number ending in 3108, can you please unmute? Phone number ending in 3108, can you please unmute?
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just have one question. Regardless of which way you vote, whether it's save the city or to go with the other company, wherever, our garbage rates are prop 218. I'm wondering if how that's going to affect that, and does the council need to come back and, and have a comment period or something for the ratepayers on how it's going to affect us?
Is that all, Ms. Halbert?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the services being provided are for street sweeping services, which are not part of the garbage rates. As Cody shared during his presentation, these fees that we pay to Jilton are currently being 100% funded via the gas tax that we receive from the state of California. That would continue to be the case, although the general fund will have to supplement as gas tax revenues continue to decrease over time.
Thank you. No more public comment online?
Mayor, that is all.
Okay, any more public comment in person? All right, any more questions or comments from council? Out of curiosity, just pure curiosity, what are other jurisdictions doing now in response to?
Actually spoken with one local municipality, and they have a current street sweeper that they own. But they are considering a partnership with us. And I actually received a request from another local agency that is interested in maybe partnering up with us as well. So those two entities, I know, are, are very interested in what we do.
And the city of Patterson also moved forward with bringing that service in-house.
All right, well, that sounds positive. Are there any other questions or comments? Then I'll bring it back for a motion.
So I, I think for us, it probably makes the most sense. I know it's a one-time large sum from the general fund, the 372, to get the, the Timco Model 600. I think, looking down the road, the partnerships with Jilton, the possible partnerships with the other cities, I think it makes the most sense going with the recommendation of, of option 2A. So I'll make a motion for item 11.2, option 2A, the purchase of the Timco Model 600.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 for option 2A. Motion passes five zero for option two A.
Item eleven point three, a resolution to adopt a facility rental fee waiver policy for city-owned facilities.
Mayor and council, your director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Patton, will provide this report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So we have a presentation on facility rental fee waiver policy. Can I give you a little bit of history on this? So the Parks and Recreation Department, we oversee the management of city-owned facilities for public use. This includes your swimming pool, community center, Scout Hall, our partnership with the middle school user gymnasium, sports fields, all those fun things we have. A lot of these facilities have fees associated with them. And every year, every day, every week, we receive tons of requests from user groups to have these fees waived. Right now, there is no current city policy to allow staff to waive fees. And so what we do is we have taken the city council for your approval. We've done this recently, actually with the Riverbank Historical Society, Múcaras de Acción, and other groups. In two thousand and twenty-four, after multiple requests that we're taking the city council, staff were requested to look into forming a policy that would expedite the process and allow staff to possibly waive fees so that we want to take it back to council every two weeks with new requests. So the purpose of this, of the policy is to create parameters for city staff to waive facility user fees for applicable groups. And doing so, it promotes efficiency, so we don't have to come back here every two weeks, or you get to July, we only have one city council meeting with these groups planning events, fundraisers. It's kind of hard to wait multiple weeks to get an answer. Allows us to do with fairness, so we would look at how we waive fees. We have criteria in order to say, hey, here's how we're gonna waive fees. And then let me set a frequent request. We're taking these to city council meetings, so it saves the mayor from going to consent calendar, reading it out loud every single time. So we have developed a policy we provided with you. The policy involves Scout Hall, community center, our city parks and picnic shelters, athletic fields, courts, and the community pool. In our policy, we have city staff mainly being the city manager and the Parks and Recreation Director being able to waive fees. The we, the we, the fee waiver is only for the facility user fee. That does not include the required security deposit, additional staffing if that's requested, equipment rentals. So for example, the community center, we have the stage, microphones that we rent out. Does not include that. On-site security, so if there's alcohol present at these events, we usually contract with on-site security. That cost is still on the user. Cleaning fees, insurance, et cetera. So this fee is just for the facility rental fee. Staff can't waive fees if one of the more, one or more of the following conditions are met. The event is cosponsored by the city Riverbank or serves a municipal purpose. So state of the city ties in there. The applicant is a verified nonprofit organization hosting a free and open event to the community. Event directly benefits Riverbank residents or enhances community well-being. The event is organized for youth, seniors, individuals with disabilities or underserved populations. And lastly, the event commemorates a recognized national or local holiday or of, of, of observance. So we're looking for any, when we get a request, need to meet at least one of these criteria. Part of the policy is no cash donations or funding proceeds may be directed to individuals excluding student scholarships or for-profit entities as a result of waived facility fees. So for example, councilmember Uribé, Uribé can't go and say, hey, let's do fundraiser for Michael's new house. Let's go get some money so he can get that down payment in. None of that. The maximum value of facility rental fee waivers approved under the policy by the city manager or Parks and Recreation Director shall not exceed seventy-five hundred in total annual, in total annually without city council approval. So throughout the whole year, if we get thousands of requests, we're gonna waive these up to seventy-five hundred dollars. If we get way more requests, we're gonna come to city council to kind of get your guys' approval on these kinds of activities. So we're not waiving fees willy-nilly for every single person and organization. Each organization may receive up to two fee waivers per calendar year unless otherwise approved by the city council. So we don't have one non-proper group asking every single week to use a facility. It kind of makes sure that if those groups have really want to use facilities a lot, they pick their, which, which days they want it.
I think it's probably fair, after a year, maybe we reevaluate if you do get thousands of requests and, and some get up to two and depletes the seventy-five hundred. Maybe it makes sense in a year from now to drop it down to the one, so it's kind of more, you know, evenly distributed, the seventy-five hundred. Because the seventy-five hundred is coming from the general fund, correct?
Yeah, okay. Later on in our policy, it's not mentioned in our PowerPoint, but we do talk about that. It could be read and reviewed after three years. But obviously, if it comes an issue, we can bring it up. Also in the report, it's, let's skip ahead to one more slide right here. So my responsibility would be retaining a log of all pre-fee waivers, including organization name, event description, date, facility used, and amount waived. We'll also provide an annual summary that will present to council of how the fees were distributed. So if we do see, hey, we approved, say, ten fee requests, but we received seventy, we can say after that year, like, hey, that's a lot going on there, so we have to adjust some things. So I'll go back to this one slide. To get a fee waiver request, we do have an application for our facilities. We do have an application for that as well. So this will be a whole separate application. Needs to be submitted at least thirty days before the event. It'll allow staff to review the application and we will notify. Those have submitted fourteen business days of submission. The nine applicants can then come to city council if they don't like our judgment and make their case there. With that being said, we do have people that submit applications or request use of a facility months in advance, as well as fee waiver, so we can take that there, have them fill it out, give them quick response, and we do have people that wait till the very last minute. So when we do get those inquiries, we're gonna make sure we tell them, like, hey, this needs to take top priority. Don't wait till the last minute. So as far as staff review, when we look at the, the requests, we're gonna make sure it lines with community benefit, make sure it is good impact with community. Our availability of staff and the facilities, so if the facility is already booked out, can't really do a whole lot there. Or if it's on a holiday where we know a lot of our staff are gone, we can't really help out much. It demonstrates a financial need, so if it does help out with creating their event, or, I mean, if they're bringing thousands of dollars for the fundraiser, I mean, they don't necessarily need the fee waiver. Also, we're gonna take into consideration past use history and conduct with the organization. So we want to make sure that we are, we love, we love working with these, with these partnerships. And, you know, if we have a group that causes us heartburn and drama and issues, it may not be worth it to us explore that because it may continue with more of the issues that we see. And that's my presentation. Bill, for any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions?
As a person who has used the request several times, I think it's great that we put it in writing and we have it so that you don't have to take it to council all the time for consideration. I like what you're saying about who and what and why, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Else? Without naming names, are there folks who use it more often, the others that would impact the seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, we've actually had a conversation recently with a group that plans on using the facility way more than two times. And, you know, I mean, we use the facility to, again, for community benefit. It's kind of hard when one group monopolizes it or uses it for all their activities and events. So we want to make sure then, again, it's available for the community to use and take advantage of. And as we look at the seventy-five hundred, we looked at our past year usage. If we have the same usage for this coming year, we expect to be under that seventy-five hundred. So I mean, unless this, you know, we have a lot of people watching this and they're like, oh, this is a great thing to have, and they start bugging us first thing tomorrow, that might change. But, but we anticipate to be under that seventy-five hundred.
Thank you. Any public comment or questions?
There's no one on Zoom there.
I will bring it back to council. Before we move on, did we feel that two suffices, or did you want to explore one?
I think two is good.
All right. Any other council comments or questions? I'll open it to a motion.
I make a motion that we approve item eleven point three.
I second.
Recall, please.
Councilmember Oribé?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. All right. So staff comments?
Just a couple of comments from staff today. The last food court Friday for the year is this Friday, May thirtieth. To close out this year's successful event, Parks and Recreation will be holding its first movie in the park in the grass area of the sports complex. They'll be showing Elemental. So come get your food from your favorite truck and catch the movie with us, and the movie will begin at dusk. A friendly reminder to all that we are currently in our spring and summer watering schedule. Odd addresses can water on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. And even, even addresses can water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays before ten AM in the morning or after seven PM. No watering is allowed on Mondays. The city will be hosting a workshop regarding the Riverwalk project on Wednesday, July ninth, at six o'clock PM in the community center. Join us to learn more about this project. It's gonna be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the city council, and there will be no decision-making. It will be just an informational workshop. And an update regarding our recycled water project. The city had applied for a fifty million dollar grant for this project, but were advised that due to changes in the federal government, the program is no longer being funded. The city will be exploring alternative funding sources, including the EPA WIFIA program. The progress continues to be made with the State Water Board for SRF funding, who has allocated approximately eighty-three million dollars to the city already. And that is all from staff.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I don't have any comments. I just would like to comment on what was just announced. And it's something that I have heard that was gonna happen, and it's unfortunate because it's not only our city, it's other cities throughout the United States. And I'm sorry to hear that this has happened. However, I do think it brings forward that we should have a discussion about doing a feasibility study on what other things we can do with the wastewater treatment plant to meet our water needs in the future. And I'll be bringing that forward when needed. Thank you.
Councilmember Oribé?
Yeah, that, the, the brick grant, if that's what we're referring to, that, that is a little bit shocking. So we definitely need to discuss that a little bit more, definitely at the next council meeting. I'll, I'll be reaching out to Cody and having some discussions about that. That's kind of a shocker. Doug kind of scared me on my, my announcement here, so if Doug, if you need to yell at me a little bit more to go for it. So just a reminder, June eighth through the twenty-eighth, we're gonna be doing a donation drive for Sierra House. We're gonna be collecting socks, undergarments, laundry detergent, bleach, hand soap, everything you can think of for our, you know, for our homeless. We're gonna have drop-off donations here. Suite A is gonna be from Monday through Friday, ten AM to four PM. City Hall is not open on June eighth, but please start to, start to get those items, collect them. And then on June ninth, bring them in. We'll have a donation box up at the front. Me, me and I'll cover the person's face. The other person will, will, will figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pimentel?
Yeah, on the seventeenth, I attended the Latina Awards. It was very nice. I want to give a shout out to Johnny Garcia. It was very organized and well-done. And then on the eighteenth, I helped with the pancake breakfast. Good job, Cindy. I can say that here. It was very nice. Well done. And also I had my first meet and greet on the twentieth. I'll be doing another one possibly in the middle of June. And I will post on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Call?
Okay, Minor Long. I went to the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance meeting after a previous meeting. There are presentations from Behavioral Health Outreach and Engagement, as well as the new Dignity Village in Modesto. I was most interested in learning more about the different options for housing and the type of, the types of permanent supportive housing. The county is really getting creative with what they're doing there, so I commend them on that. And the most eye-opening thing for me is how specific the tenant requirements are based on the funding source. So to kind of elaborate on that, Proposition One funding, it's all specific to permanent supportive housing for mental health needs, and substance abuse was now added to that funding for Proposition One, then kind of carries into it. But Behavioral Health Board meeting, I went to that last Thursday to hear about the changings due, the changes due to Proposition One and how funding will be realigned and who will be impacted by these changes. One of the most impactful questions asked that night by a board member was how do we protect the proven programs for preventative services? Proposition One is moving revenue streams from preventative services to long-term ongoing services, which appear to be majority housing. So getting to see that roll out and that change. I attended, unsurprised nobody mentioned it, but the strategic plan with the team. I was able to discuss what I felt was significant. So some of the priorities that I was able to contribute was the need for an ordinance on vacant commercial and partnership, vacant commercial properties and partnerships to revitalize our downtown through banker partnership programs and possibly adding economic development liaisons or staff to support Riverbank businesses and the exposure for them as a whole. The Parks and Rec expansion opportunities and adding accountability as a value for the city. We need to hold each other accountable in making decisions for our community as one. I attended the memorial celebration, which was absolutely incredible. So thank you, Mayor, for helping with that. And Councilmember Oribé, I know you had some conversations with veteran inaction there. So it was beautiful and I was really, really proud to be there. It's an emotional experience for me, so I just, I really want to thank you guys for putting that together. It was beautiful. The life jacket drive, I've talked about it before, but community member Corinne Whitlow and I are doing a life jacket drive on May thirty-first at Jacob Myers Park. We have already raised over sixty jackets. They're sitting in my office and I can't wait to offload them. We will be out there from ten AM to two PM, and we have so far raffle prizes from Wildbrow Studio, Get Toasted, One Oh Eight Sports Lounge, and then other businesses from surrounding cities supporting the cause like York Orthopedic, Wildfire, and Frenzy. Councilmember Oribé touched on it, but we have the fresh drive starting in June. And then we have my last thing. So for a while, we've been talking about Opportunity Stanislaus and reviewing that MOU. I'm just requesting council to revisit the allocation of funding for the contract for Opportunity Stanislaus.
Thank you. There is a lot going on. I'll just mention that I have my, my Meet the Mayor at Galaxy Theater this Thursday at four thirty. And just something that's been sitting on my mind is we're, we're gonna be seeing a reassessment of our water rates. Where, I mean, we heard earlier today the potential for long-term increases for our ratepayers. And, and with this news of the brick grant, it just solidifies that we are not gonna get the extra support for our wastewater treatment plant. And so it worries me. I mean, as, as a ratepayer that struggles as well, that we are gonna continue offloading these increases to our ratepayers without the promise that we had originally a few years back, mentioned where we were gonna potentially be able to kind of pull back some of these rate increases. And so I think as we are seeing the increases on all ends, that we get an agenda item showing real costs to residents. So as we're discussing with financial advisors, what's gonna come forward with our options for the wastewater treatment plant? And again, I want to be supportive of a feasibility study in those options as well. So we can show our neighbors and our residents that we're really committed to quality, but also livability and affordability of, of our cost of living. So that is that. We are going to move to a closed session. Item fourteen point one, conference with labor negotiator, negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six. HNC representative, city manager, Marcella Garcia, employer organizations, Riverbank miscellaneous employees. And then item fourteen point two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code five four nine five seven. B one, title, city manager. And I believe that's it. So we'll adjourn to closed session.
Mayor, we need to open for public comment.
Just kidding. Are there public comments on closed session at all, online? Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session.
Okay, we are reconvening from closed session. Item fifteen point one conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been given and stuff. Fifteen point two report. Uh wait. Close session item fourteen point two public employee performance evaluation. Direction has been given. We will adjourn at our next regular city council meeting Tuesday June tenth. This meeting is adjourned.